Mr. Mudd, recording has begun.
All righty, thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is John Mudd speaking. Just to note that Chairman Gann and Mr. Sampson are unable to attend tonight, and therefore I will be serving as chairman for tonight's proceedings. We do have a forum, so we are able to proceed. And with that, I would ask Councilwoman Bryant Ward to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thanks. One nation, under God, indivisible, et cetera.
All right, thank you very much for that. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. And I'm confused here, Janine. Was there a meeting on February 7?
Yes, there was.
Okay, because I'm sorry if I wasn't there, because I got a, two days before, a change to the calendar that said the meeting had been canceled. And I got no other further emails, so I did not attend. So anyway, be that as it may, has everyone else had a chance to review the February 7 minutes? And if so, are there any changes or questions at this point? All right, hearing none, then I ask for a motion to approve the February 7 minutes for the Planning Commission.
Vice Chair Mudd, this is Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward III. I move that we approve the February 7, 2023, meeting minutes as presented.
All right.
Vice Chair Mudd, Commissioner Banks, I second.
All right, we have a proper motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I guess I'm not in a position to vote, so I'm assuming that's a valid approval based on the remaining members who were in attendance. All right, that then leads us to our first item for tonight, and I'll turn it over to Janine at this point for her initial staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Janine Harrington, Director of Planning for the Town. As of the project before us tonight is a special exception request for a senior living community on 11.29 acres of land that is zoned commercial highway. Under the town code, any senior living age-restricted development is subject to the special provisions listed under Chapter 191-52.h.28. So as I mentioned, the property is zoned commercial highway, is currently undeveloped. Under our comprehensive plan designation, it was medium-density residential as a land use. To the north of the property is zoned commercial highway, as well as to the south and to the east, and then to the west is residential R10 zoning. So for a background on the property, it is located approximately 630 feet west of the intersection of Hawthorne Road and US 301. It has access to Oriole Lane and Magnolia Drive. And the special exception request before the Planning Commission tonight for recommendation is for 72 senior living unit apartments. Since it's commercial highway, it does have that requirement for that special exception approval. The application shows that one of the three proposed multifamily buildings on the subject property is proposed to be age-restricted and senior living. And as referenced on site plan page 18, Buildings A and B are not to be restricted, and it will only be Building C. So if the special exception is approved, the project would need to proceed with a major site plan in order to review for water, sewer, stormwater management, forest conservation, and other zoning requirements. The Planning Commission's recommendation will be forwarded to the Board of Appeals, which has been scheduled for April 12, 2023. Under the criteria for approvals and findings, under Chapter 191, staff has noted and referenced the special exception report and exhibits that is attached to the agenda, which contains the report and site plans for the proposed development. So for the standards, they must have access to a collector arterial or primary street, and they do. The tract cannot be less than four acres, and they have 11. what was it, 6.9? 11.29? So they do meet that requirement. The lot must have 100 feet of frontage on a street listed above, and they do also have that along Oriole Lane and/or Magnolia Drive. They must have side and rear setbacks in accordance with that section of code, and they do show those. Maximum overall density shall not exceed 15 dwelling units per acre, which they will not. They have dimensional requirements under Table 20, which have been met. They must show buffer yard requirements for an F buffer yard, those are shown on the plan. And then as part of the ultimate approval, they will need to have residency and occupancy restrictions, and that would need to be recorded prior to the use and occupancy permit. So staff is recommending to the Board of Appeals to approve to allow for the construction of a senior living community as shown and detailed in the Planning Commission staff report. And I am here to answer any questions you might have, but we also have the applicants who have prepared statements should you have any questions of them. And I just realized, Kelly, that we didn't add the comments. We did receive a comment letter from a resident of the public. So if you're able to, Kelly, bring that comment letter up, I would like to recognize and acknowledge that as part of the official record. We'll make sure to include that.
One moment, please. My apologies for the delay.
The Planning Commission did receive a copy of those comments, correct? So everyone does have a copy of that? Okay. You know what, Kelly, it might be going to a private folder.
It's marked "public."
Director Harrington, can I ask a question while we're doing this?
Absolutely.
My first question is, I see this letter is dated April 3. You obviously did not have this letter as part of your analysis. Is that correct?
That is correct. We did receive it yesterday. But as such, we still wanted to make sure that the Commission had the opportunity to review the comments by the public.
Thank you. I have a follow-on question, if I may. So looking at the, at the letter, would you need to give this additional consideration?
So the commentary that is contained within the letter is really applicable at the major site plan stage of the development. So right now, when we're looking at this special exception request, we are not really looking at the minor details, we're looking at the use of the property. Are we going to allow the use of senior age-restricted living on the property? And then they do have to make sure that the property is conducive to a senior living community, which is why there are the sum of the criteria that's within the code. But once we get into the major site plan, they will have to do the three-step stormwater management process, forest conservation, water and sewer analysis, school seat analysis for the remaining buildings, so there will be an in-depth review. And that's where the, as part of this, we are showing the buffer yard, as mentioned within her commentary, in compliance with the section of code for a special exception. But it will be reviewed in further detail at the major site plan stage.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I have a question. So did I, and then I apologize, I'm typically good about laboring things, labeling things, but did I see something that said that there were no buffer yards required? Or in?
Not that I am aware of. So along any residential property, it does have to have an F buffer yard.
Is it 50 feet?
I think it-
There was something that referenced the buffer yards in the presentation tonight, and for whatever reason, I cannot put my hands on it.
Let me pull up the specific code real quick. Stacy, do you have?
We are actually, we are required to provide a buffer yard type F adjacent to where you see the Jamestown subdivision, that area. So we are providing a 50-foot buffer yard type F along that entire property.
Okay.
So as well as to the north, we're also providing a 30-foot buffer yard on the northern end of the project.
And it does have to be 50?
Well, it's ranges between 20 and 50. We've chosen the 50.
And so the concern is that the 50 feet covers up the stormwater management?
There is no stormwater in that 50 feet.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what I can-
Okay. From the, the F, the-
Oh, right. She, I'm not sure where she derived that.
Okay.
The stormwater is actually outside of the buffer yard.
Okay, that's, that was my only question. And I know it's not, it doesn't pertain to why we're here tonight, but I just wanted to seek clarification on that.
Yeah, no, the stormwater is outside of the 50.
Okay, I'm good.
All right, Janine, John Mudd here. Just as a point of procedural clarification, am I correct in that tonight the Planning Commission considers this proposal and will likely forward it to the Plan, or the Board of Appeals? The Board of Appeals will have a public hearing, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. And as you recited earlier, the Board of Appeals has a whole litany of considerations they have to go through in rendering a decision as to whether this is an appropriate use. I guess my point would be, the letter that was received yesterday would suggest that that be forwarded to the Board of Appeals, and certainly suggests the individual, if it is a public hearing, certainly has the opportunity to attend that public hearing and present their concerns directly to the Board of Appeals. I also agree that the details of this issue will be fleshed out at the site plan stage. But I still think it's worth the Board of Appeals to look at this issue and consider it in their deliberations.
Yes, all public comment received will be forwarded to the Board of Appeals. And we have had direct communication with a couple of the neighbors, and I've notified them of where to go to join the meeting virtually, or when they can come in person.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Got it. I've been fooling with that little button for 10 minutes now. You ready for us? Okay. Good evening, Acting Chair Mudd and Planning Commission members. My name is Steve Scott. I'm the Land Use Counsel for the applicant. We've got, as you know, Stacy Legana, needs no introduction, with us from Lorenzi-Dodds in Gannell, Jessica Zaniga from Foundation Development Group, did I say that correctly again? And Tyler Grody from Osprey Development. This is, as the staff report indicates, an application, of course, for a special exception for Senior Housing Project. The, a couple of things that are important to note, one of them is that the Senior Housing Project will encompass 72 units on this 11-plus acre parcel, being part of the project that's being developed. The balance of the project will be non-age-restricted multifamily. It's also important to note that the application to undertake the special exception and include the senior housing component is really a softening of what can be done on the project or on the property by right in the CH zone. So we view this, this application as a, as an improvement in terms of impacts on the surrounding area because of the addition of the senior component. And I think you'll see, if you looked at the traffic impact statement, you'll see that there was an indication that that is the case in terms of traffic. And of course, that will be the case in terms of school capacity, because we'll need that, that fewer number of, of school allocations to undertake the senior housing component of this project. So, and we don't want to belabor the point too much, because we think this is a really great project. We hope that the Planning Commission sees it the same way. But we do have a, a short PowerPoint. I think what I'd like to do, Kelly, if you could pull up the, the site plan from either the Planning Commission materials or the, the PowerPoint, maybe that could be up, and we could speak in reference to that while we're, while we're talking.
Which would you prefer, sir?
Either one, as long as we get the, the site plan up. There it is, okay. So first, I'd like to let the, the developers and the property manager introduce themselves. They've done, they've done another number of projects together, and just not in the town of La Plata. They've been in southern Maryland. And I think it's important for the Planning Commission and the local folks to know who we're dealing with. So I'm going to turn it over to Tyler Grody, and we're just going to have a quick introduction of who Osprey Development is and what they do. And then also to Jessica to talk about Foundation.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening, everyone. As Steve said, my name is Tyler Grody with Osprey Property Companies. So we are a Maryland-based developer. We focus primarily on multifamily development throughout the state. I have also had experience in Pennsylvania and Virginia as well. Currently, we own around 2,000 multifamily units throughout the state. That includes southern Maryland, that includes further north from here, that includes on the eastern shore. We've been around since 1988, so we've, we've been doing this for, for quite some time. I have a very experienced team of developers that know the industry, know how to build a good product, know how to build a good community. We're very proud of what we do, and we have a very good track record and references and everything that speaks to that. We're excited to come to La Plata for the first time, the town of La Plata. We have previous experience in Charles County, in Waldorf, developing other age-restricted projects similar to this, near the St. Charles Town Center, Victoria Park, off of Waymoth Court is our most recent one. We recently did a full-scale renovation of that project that finished in 2020. It's a fully occupied property, does great. So we're excited to be here. We really think that this, this use is a, is a great fit for this site and for the town to provide housing for seniors in the town of La Plata, so.
Thank you, Tyler. And we often get questions with projects like this regarding management and whether there will be onsite management, professional management. And even though that's not one of the elements for the special exception, we wanted to give you the background on that, and that's Jessica Zaniga, I don't want to get that wrong, with Foundation Development Group. And Jessica will speak to her company and their management abilities.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jessica Zaniga, and I have a development company called Foundation Development Group. We are the applicant. We have worked with Tyler's firm on a number of other multifamily communities in Maryland and in Pennsylvania, actually. In our tenure history, we have developed just shy of 1,000 units and have a pretty robust pipeline, both in Virginia and in Maryland. We have a related management company called Humphrey Management. We are actually celebrating our 40th year of property management. We have over 9,000 units in five states. Our, our core markets are the Baltimore metro area and the Washington metro area. So our closest communities are in Prince George's County and also in St. Mary's. And we have a staff of 350 people across our five-state portfolio.
Jessica, could you speak to the, the particular management for this project, your, your plans for management?
Sure. So we are proposing a total of 120 units. So 72 of them, which are subject to the special exception, will be age-restricted, and the other 48 will be general occupancy. We do envision this running somewhat separate, but also jointly. So we, we expect to have a team of at least four full-time onsite community manager as well as maintenance staff. We may have two additional part-time, depending upon the needs of the community. We will be open five to six days a week. We have 24-hour emergency maintenance. And we do have office space planned for the senior building, which is an elevator building. So there will be onsite community manager there, and then we'll also have onsite presence in the clubhouse, which will be specific to the family community.
Thank you. Unless there are any questions of Tyler or Jessica, I think I'd like to ask, Stacy, could you just sort of give us a brief summary of the, what we, what we see on the screen there, the site layout and the proposed concept for this project?
Sure. As noted, the building to the, as looking at the plan, to the east is the 72 senior living apartments and subject to the special exception. The area to the west contains the two buildings, which are the 48 non-age-restricted apartments. We have two points of access on this site, Magnolia Drive and Oriole Lane. This allows for adequate egress and ingress and egress, and it's also ideal for emergency services in the event of an emergency. So plenty of circulation here. We also have, of course, which was alluded to earlier, have the clubhouse and the playground for the residents' use. There'll be plenty of sidewalks and pedestrian ways throughout this project. This project also serves as somewhat of a transition from the commercial area along 301. We have the Pepsi Building, the Dash Inn, Marie's Diner, all businesses that I'm sure everyone is, is familiar with. And this serves as somewhat of a transition from going from those high-density commercial uses to this apartment project, and then transitioning to the single-family, which is exactly what the, the comprehensive plan and the code calls for. So as we circumvent the, the property or to the south, there's a 50-foot buffer yard type F that we will be providing as a buffering to the adjacent residential community known as Jamestown. We plan to hopefully preserve as many trees in that area as we can, and maybe provide some forest conservation there and maximize the, the preservation of the existing vegetation in that area to the extent feasible. With that, I think that's a synopsis of the-
Okay.
If I may, upon that, I do want to note here that since I'm looking at this plan compared to the site plan, the next one down, the comment letter that we received, I could see where the confusion came into play. So if you look at this, it, it does, you don't see the 50-foot buffer yard shown on this initial plan. But if, Kelly, if you can go down a sheet.
That's a very good point.
Keep going. Appendix seats, this one. So here, it's a little bit easier to see where the stormwater management facility is, and then there's that 50-foot buffer yard that's proposed. So I do want to make that clarification, that that might be confusing to applicants or residents that are looking at this from a bird's-eye view, if they're looking at the colorful one, which does look pretty and it catches your attention. But it doesn't show that 50-foot buffer yard on there. So that may solve some of the confusion. And then the, the buffer yard, it does require it to be an F under the code, but there are different levels that applicants can choose, if they want it to be more dense, less dense.
Okay.
So that's, that's an option. But I just noticed that when I was looking at the, the first sheet there.
Thank you, Director Harrington. Good catch. I apologize for, for any confusion that may have caused. But yes, that, that buffer is most definitely there and will be obviously addressed in more detail, as was said earlier, during the, the site plan and site development stage. Next, as to elements necessary for the approval of this special exception. As, as you're aware, Planning Commission, there are a number of elements in the zoning ordinance that the Board of Appeals will look at in connection with the approval of this special exception, or their, their consideration of this special exception. For tonight's purposes, I think what we'd like to do is take record notice of the application, which sets forth each of those elements in detail, and the applicant's response to each element. And then dovetail with that the, the staff report, which analyzed the application and the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive land use plan, and found compliance with the, the various elements necessary to, to grant the special exception and find that the use was insistent with the zoning ordinance for this particular project. Alternatively, if any Planning Commission member has any questions, we can certainly walk through those elements. Again, for tonight's purposes, I felt like we could take record notice of, of what's in the record for establishment of those, those elements and, and the, the requirements for this special exception. Just emphasizing that, again, we'd say that there has been indicated in the record compliance with the comprehensive land use plan, compliance with the zoning ordinance, certainly with the, the purpose and intent of the CH zone. And as Stacy indicated, this particular property being zoned CH could be developed for a, a number of high-density, high-intensity commercial uses. But as this is turning out to be the case with this particular applicant, we believe that this use provides a really nice transition between those high-density, high-intensity commercial uses along US Route 301 and the, and the residential uses that are further to the south. Is that south, or is that west? West, thank you. That's why I became a lawyer and not a, not a surveyor. And again, we, we think it, it provides a nice transition. And, and again, we just point out also that the inclusion of this special exception element, this senior housing component into this project is, is really a softening of what could be done there in terms, in terms of multifamily use and provides for a much lower impact on the surrounding neighborhood. So with that, we would open it up for questions for the Planning Commission, and thank you very much.
So I guess there's no questions at this point from the Planning Commission? Apparently not. All right, Janine, anything else to add to this application at this point?
No, I don't have anything additional.
All right. Very good. All right, well then I'll ask, is there a motion for consideration of approval for this application by the Planning Commission?
Chairman Mudd, I move that we recommend to the Board of Appeals approval to allow for the construction of a senior living community as shown and detailed in the Planning Commission staff report.
All right, do we have a second?
I second.
All right, thank you, Dawn. All right, we have a proper motion and second. All in favor, please say yes.
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 And I also vote yes. So it's a unanimous decision, and the recommendation for approval has been made, and this will now move forward to the Board of Appeals on April 12. And we thank you very much for your time and effort. Thank you very much, Chairman Mudd and Planning Commission members. Okay, Janine, I guess that takes us next to the next item, which is your departmental report.
Yes. So I don't have too much to offer you, since I'm just now getting back from six weeks kind of in and out of the office. I did want to include a link to the town's proposed upgrades to Charles Street that we're working on with the State Highway Administration and Maryland Department of Transportation. So the link that's in the document on the agenda will take you to a website that the state has put together, and it will allow for a community-
and it will allow for community engagement, will allow for commentary. I believe it became at the actual survey became active yesterday. So I do encourage all of our boards and commissions, residents to go check that out and take a look at the progress that's been made and provide comments should you have any. Now for Planning Department priority.
Is there a link there? I didn't see a link.
In the Planning Department Updates. It's on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah. So if you go on the agenda, you'll see that. But for our Planning Department priorities. Yes.
Sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. I just had a quick question, and I think you said something at the beginning, but can you tell me again, how is the survey being communicated?
So it's done.
How do people access?
So it's being done through the state, the website, that there's a link in my Planning Department Updates PowerPoint. So if you go in there, I believe that there is a community survey somewhere on that page. I don't know exactly off the top of my head.
No, I I see that. My my question, and I apologize if I if I misstated my question. How will? How is it being advertised?
Oh, so right now
How to access the survey?
That we haven't done too much at this point. I am going to be putting it out on the Planning Department Facebook page. We'll put it on the town Facebook page on the town's website. I included it in my business meeting for the town council, and I'll continue trying to push it out however I can. We had several people that were included in the initial kind of reviews, some of the residents, some business owners. So they received a copy of that as well. So we'll try to push it out through the Business Association. So there's several avenues that we can take to get this out there.
Excellent. Thank you.
Very welcome. So for our priorities moving forward, I have the annual report that's going to be due July first. So I will bring that to the Planning Commission by June. We're still working on Planning Commission rules and procedures. You saw I was trying to take it to April, but that fell by the wayside as well. So we're still working on that. Hopefully, I can get that. So one of the upcoming meetings here very, very soon. Still working through our municipality building permit and development review software. We're kind of ending phase two at this point. I forgot to update that, and we're moving into phase three. But we're looking towards the fall for that to be active and for applicants to be able to utilize online portal. We're still moving forward with several town code revisions. We have the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance that I'm working with the town attorney currently to start making some deeper edits to that and getting some legal advice before we proceed with that review. And so hopefully, we'll have that before the council in May. Or we're, I'm not trying to make any guarantees right now, but I'm doing my best to get that draft finished so we can start the review process. And that's all I have at this point, unless you have any specific questions for me.
Director Harrington, have you had any complaints about pine grove in the construction?
There have been on and off complaints, but nothing significant as of late.
Related to the the quality of the construction or just the?
I haven't received any complaints about the quality. I've seen some things online being passed around, but I haven't received anything directly.
Okay.
All right. Well, I guess that leaves then finally council updates from Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
So the only two updates I have, I want to remind you of Arbor Day on April fifth and the founding of La Plata on April fourth. We issued two proclamations in regards to those two items, so definitely take a look at them. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Is there anything else for the good of the cause from any of the board members at this point in time? If not, I'll thank everyone, and we will proceed to close the meeting for tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night.